... Good evening, everyone who turned out. I am Marsha Kramer. And on behalf of CBS Two and WLYTV 1055, along with our partners, and there are a lot of partners, WCBS Radio 880, 1010 Winds News, New York Daily News, the City University, the New York Immigration Coalition, and Common Cause New York, we would like to welcome you to our second series of Town Hall meetings. Now, before we get started, I'd like to thank our gracious hosts here at the New York Hall of Science. And I want to introduce the panel. Joining me on the panel tonight is, to my right, Juliette Papa from 1010 Winds News. Juliette?
Well, our coalition here has been awarded the mayoral debates in the fall by the New York City Campaign Finance Board. And in preparing for that, we want to hear the voices of real New Yorkers, which are following me.
Well, thanks Juliette. And also joining us this evening is City Hall reporter for the New York Daily News, Michael Holm, a moderate, very proudly, Eric Durkin. Eric?
We're holding these meetings in all New York City boroughs throughout the month of June. It's one way as New Yorkers to share your questions and concerns and let your voice be heard. It's a forum where you can let us know what qualities you would like to see in this year's candidates for mayor, comptroller, and public secretary.
And finally, the lone man, the brave man on the panel, from WCBS News Radio 880, Peter Haskell.
Together as news and civic organizations committed to community engagement, we would like to, the issues raised reflect concerns of New Yorkers from every corner of the city, from Flushing to Midland Beach and from Pelopark to Sunset Park and Harlem. So this is your floor and your forum. We are here to listen to you tonight. And we will be recording your questions and concerns. We'll be sharing it with our viewers. And this Town Hall meeting is being streamed live on CBSNewYork.com.
Peter, thank you very much. Now, in the spirit of maximizing participation and making sure we can hear from as many of you as possible, we ask for your cooperation on a few ground rules. If you have a question or a comment, please line up at this microphone and stand in front of the microphone, which is at the side of the stage. If you'd like to follow up, please keep your comments brief so that we don't want, over time, everybody has an opportunity to talk. And if you do have a comment that you'd like to make in Spanish, we will help and translate it for the rest of our audience. Also, if you don't have a chance to express your concerns this evening, or would like to do so afterwards, we're happy to hear them on our respected social media pages. Or you can leave us written questions with our staff after the meeting. And with that, let's get started, or as they say in the box room, "Let's get ready to rumble." So who's the first person who'd like to come to the microphone? Don't be shy. The microphone's waiting.
Hi.
So then, what's your name?
My name is Carol Black. I live in Forest Hills, New York. Before I even start, I just have to make a request that when you have any other meetings of this kind, they have to be more accessible for people with disabilities. And they should also be hearing impaired or... And I tried to find a way to get upstairs here. There was no place to leave the elevator on this floor and walk to where the meeting was. My questions are twofold. I represent the invisible disability community. I have to tell you that firstly, I stopped voting a while ago. And I think this is important for politicians to know, that there are many people that are being forced to vote in places that are not accessible, not reachable, especially if you have a disability. But that wasn't my real question for the forums. My real question for the forums is this. We have politicians like Mayor de Blasio, who goes ahead and gives awards, gives proclamations to places like Access VR and other organizations to help people with disabilities. But you know what? They're not helping people with disabilities. There are more people in agencies like Access VR, like OPWDD, that are challenging these organizations to help different groups of people with disabilities. And so what good are these organizations, what good are our politicians if they're not really out there? I would like to see a politician like, um, sorry, because I have a disability, the advocate, but isn't that the one that does public advocacy, that does all these studies to see what's working? I'd like to see the public advocate do studies on these organizations that are out there to help people who have a disability. And I want to know what the new politicians are going to be doing about these issues.
So my question to you is, what question exactly would you could talk to the mayoral candidates in the form of a question? What would be the most important question for you to ask?
I already asked Mayor de Blasio at the first public hearing I went to.
Where'd you ask him?
What I asked him was, well, what is going to happen? I have a speech. Can I give it to both of you or am I allowed to do it to my resume?
Well, Chanel will get it.
I'll take it after.
Yeah, take it after.
Um, so my question is to the mayor, and I asked him, if you went ahead and gave a proclamation to Access VR, I mean, what were the terms that you gave to them? Because they're not helping people with a disability. So how can we go ahead and give a proclamation to an organization that's not even helping people with a disability?
I guess what I'd like to ask you is if you think there are specific things that the mayor or other people in the city should be doing to help people with disabilities, other specific things like the thing, is it, you know, accessible city buildings, accessible subways, other things?
Certainly more, certainly more accessible subways, yes. Another thing that needs to happen in New York City is, is just like the problem I'm going through with voting, voting places need to be, there are voting places that are accessible to these people. And if someone like me, and I know I'm not the only one, writes a letter, goes on a write-in letter campaign saying, "The place where you vote is not accessible." You can do something about it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Where is your polling place? And maybe we could call the board of elections.
Oh, I'm not on the electorate. My, where I live in Forest Hills, it's...
Is your polling place accessible?
No, it's a half-mile away. You have to walk up a small little ramp, which I'm here for a walk-up. And when it's the beginning of the winter and it's cold and you have to walk there, a ramp was huge for me. It's Forest Hills Library. I've been begging to be able to vote there for years.
And what do they tell you?
Oh, they give you, well, you're not, your building is right on the cusp of where you're asking to vote. Well, I said, nothing is written in stone, so you can go ahead and move that obituary lawn over a building or two. So that's one thing. But the other, the other really big thing, and I go to other things too, where there were people with disabilities, is the services. The services in New York, if you look at places outside New York, they're really unacceptable. And I'm uninvited politicians, how, what they're going to do to improve services for people with disabilities. Well, I've already mentioned, we have OPWDD, we have Access VR.
What is that?
What is OPWDD and Access VR? Well, Access VR is a place where people with disabilities go if they want to get help paying for college, they want to get help trying to find a job, they want to get help with training for a job. And OPWDD is more for people who have developmental disabilities. But the problem with that is there are many gray areas. So if you show them that you have a developmental disability, and you're in their gray area, you still have to fight to show that, yes, indeed, you do have a developmental disability. So someone like me and the people I represent really fall through the cracks.
I have a question about your voting location. Was that recently changed?
I've been fighting about this for two years for that.
Do us a favor and then afterwards, to one of our students, Chanel, we'll take your location and see if we can talk to the board of elections for you.
How do you get closer?
Yes, but to Forest Hills Library.
Is there still a polling site at the library?
Uh-huh. Okay, but you're not classified as being there. Right, in fact, I go there because each time when there's an election, it's so frustrating to me that I have to walk a half-mile here somewhere that I just walk right there, and they understand.
But your registration is okay, right? Your registration is fine? You don't have an issue with your voter registration?
No.
Okay.
It's just the place where you have to vote.
Have you tried to request an absentee ballot in regard to disability?
I will not, I will not, I will not request an absentee ballot. An absentee ballot is giving up my right and the rights of other people in New York City.
And when we go to the site that's closer to you, do they let you fill out an absentee ballot? Or do they just don't allow you to vote at all?
They won't let me vote at all.
Would you follow up through accessorize and take it to the board?
I don't use accessorize because I still can cash balance. I can carry around a disability card. But, um, no, I don't use accessorize.
And is Access VR, is that a city, Marsha Kramer's got a nonprofit that just happened to be...
No, that is the state, that exists. But still, it's still under way regulated. I mean, if our mayor realizes that there are problems and he gives a proclamation, then he should have enough knowledge to sit down with a group of people and say, "Let's see if we can figure out what the problems are," instead of just giving you a proclamation.
Okay, thank you very much. And if there's anyone else who'd like to come up to the microphone? Okay. This gentleman here. Can you tell me your name, sir?
My name is Jerome Hurt.
Jerome?
Yes.
And what part of Queens do you live in?
I live in Corona. I'm also a member of the voter directors of the New York Urban League. What's very important to me, two things. First of all, I've seen an increase in homelessness within this city. When I travel to work, for example, it's unfortunate that I have people that I see sleeping and laying on the trains. It's something that is increasing in our city. What is happening to these people? What is it that we as a city are going to do to provide housing for individuals? Housing in New York City is going up exponentially, okay? And we are pricing individuals out of this city at a rate that is so alarming. And I just would like to know, what is it that we're going to do to provide affordable housing for individuals? And I say that as someone, as a youth, who lived in a homeless shelter as well. So I would like to know, what is it we're going to do for those individuals?
So you seem to have two questions. One is, what are we going to do to provide affordable housing?
Absolutely.
People are being priced out of their neighborhoods with gentrification and everything else. But I think you have another question, and that is the problem of the homeless on the subways. And I wonder how you would phrase that and what you'd like to see some individuals do about the increase in the homeless in this city.
I think if we take care of one side, then we take care of the other. And also, in my opinion, it also starts with jobs, of course. If we're providing individuals with jobs and they can have affordable housing, I think it takes care of the piece with respect to the needing to sleep on trains.
Do you have ideas or thoughts of possible solutions or avenues that the city could go to or candidates could go to to solve these issues?
I wish I did. I really do. I think a start, honestly, was to be able to provide the free education at community schools. I think that's a help because education is so vital to ascension into a career, in my opinion. As someone again who lives in a homeless shelter, educated, got educated, and I would never look back.
So are you really saying that people who come from, or in homeless shelters, should be given free tuition at community?
Why not? I mean, we, or job training, or job training. We need more programs for job training. Even with respect to our education, what I'm noticing in what it is that I do, because with respect to urban league, I notice that we're having young people who graduate from college that's not necessarily ready for the job force. So there are programs that we need with respect to internships to get our young people ready for the workforce. We're having, unfortunately, seeing young people come home from college and they're working in the mall. That shouldn't be. We should be preparing these young people for the things that they go to college for, for what their careers are, and we're not doing that.
Jerome, I've got a question for you. One of the things Mayor de Blasio stressed in his first campaign was one of the issues that you raised, which is making the city more affordable and keeping people from being pushed out of their neighborhoods.
Right.
Do you think things are better now, worse now, or the same now?
I'll put it to you this way. In 2001, my company moved me to Charlotte, Carolina. I came back in 2014, and I see New York is worse, to be perfectly honest with you. It's not better. It's not more affordable. I just happen to be blessed to be in a career that I can still afford to live here and own a home here. So in my opinion, no, we're pricing individuals out of New York City.
Okay, Morris.
I feel that way, yes. And it's not just gentrification. Let me just say that. It's not just that, because in a lot of ways, I am for that. When I grew up, there were places, for example, in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn, I couldn't go to. I could go to those places now, for example, and I'm comfortable there. Harlem, I spent a lot of time in Harlem volunteering with young people. It's not just gentrification that is pricing our people who work hard in this city out of this city, but that's what's happening. And where are we putting these people? And that's one thing that I have an issue with. But also schools, our schools. I look at schools, for example, out in the suburbs with programs, for example, STEM programs and things of that sort. Why isn't that in minority communities for our children to be able to compete on a global level? STEM is going to allow our children to compete on a global level. That's not being offered in schools of communities that look like me.
Now, Mayor de Blasio has put out plans on some of these issues. He has a formal housing plan, a homelessness plan, which involves in 90 new shelters. I wonder if you have any thoughts on the context of this plan, how well they're working, as well as any specific questions you would ask him about his plan or you would ask his opponents about what they would do.
See, what I see is that what we're doing is we're taking these individuals and we're putting them in hotels, okay? And then what's happening is the community around them, they are pushing back against that. Those community, people in those communities don't want that they're for, they feel that their property values are going to decrease, they feel that there may be an increase in crime. It has to be a different plan, other than just putting these people in hotels. We need to have these people that have a feeling and a hope that they're going to be able to afford their own home. That's why. I believe, and this is my honest-to-God feeling, no American should ever be without a home. If you're born here, when you come here and you're born here, you should always have a home. It breaks my heart to get on a train and see families sleeping on a train because they have nowhere to go. It's a hope with not just hotels, it's a hope with they can have a home. You put someone into a home and you see the pride in them come out, and they will do everything that they possibly can to maintain that home.
So you think motivation is an issue? How do you motivate people to...?
Give a person a job and you'll see that person, you'll see hope come out of that person.
Peter, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd ask the next person to come up. While they're coming up, Joe, I want to tell you that one of our Facebook participants, Reese, has a question that follows something you said. The question Reese is asking is, "How would you stop people making six figures from getting low-income housing that are for the poor? And if they are caught, what would you do?" Okay, our next questioner is...
James Firkus from Flushing.
James.
I'm going to first tell you something, then I'll give you the questions you need to know. We have a group called Queens Civic Congress, who's supposed to be made up of 100 civic associations. You'd be lucky to get seven members there to show up at meetings, which I find ridiculous. And then you have people testifying in front of community boards as the presidents of their organization without discussing the issues. So they're giving their own personal point of view, speaking for the group, when they don't discuss it with the group, and get a vote for or against an issue. I have a big problem with that because these are giving personal opinions, stating on behalf of the organization, the organization has not discussed it, has not taken a position for or against it. I think it's ridiculous. So my question would be, would you require civic associations or organizations to discuss with their board and members local issues facing their community, to testify for or against community issues to their local community boards, stating their membership vote for or against issues? And the reason why I say that is, they have no justification for their position, just stating their position. There must be accountability. It must be saying, "Yes, I discussed it with my board, and so many members voted for, so many is against it." The other problem with the civic associations, you usually have a very small group of people, maybe 25 people from the community. A lot of people don't know, there should be a requirement to send out flyers to the community so they could attend and get their voice. What we have is little coffee clutches in civic associations. A set group come for the coffee and cake, really don't care what's going on. We got another one locally in our issue, taking advantage of the police department as their speakers every month. It's really annoying because the police officers, once they come to one meeting, and they should go to one meeting, and discuss whatever issues the community has, but to keep coming with the same thing over and over. I'd rather see the police officers on the street, patrolling the streets where the pedestrians in the community can see them there, even if they're doing nothing, see that they're around locally if they have a meeting. But to tie them up into meetings, because civic associations don't have speakers, you take advantage of it, it's really a disservice.
James, it sounds to me like you had some experiences with specific issues that you really have set up. Would you care to share with us some of the issues you're concerned with, the specific issues that you feel didn't get the proper votes, that you may want a public official, mayor or city councilman, a public gathering comptroller to address?
Well, the murder, when I won, it was zoning issues in my time. I was the chairperson of the zoning issues on one civic association.
Was there a specific zoning issue?
Yes. Where were the people? Yes. And we won, but we had a win against everybody else, like in my pushing. They were upzoning certain areas, downzoning others. In my case, if you're the downzoner, maybe they kept the value of my property, upzone the end of the block and get there 50% more. And that was very unfair. So I fought them and I won, but I had to fight against every elected official, every community board, but I won in the end.
And you thought that was exactly against?
Oh, definitely, yes. Same thing with the civic association when I was chairman of that as well. The same scenario, they wanted to forcefully upzoning in that area and to downzoning in the adjacent one, which is wrong. And we fought it and we had ourselves pulled out. Only one ever got pulled out. I was the only one to ever win on my side in my area as well.
So is there a specific question you would like to ask the mayor if you feel the answer, you know, a specific question that this elected official could do to change things to you, if they know that?
There'll probably be a number of them, but I won't take up your time. But there has to be people that testify, bring up, like the community board, they should think that, how many things are you going to discuss? And it should go to the civic associations, and these are the questions we are going to address. Discuss with your membership, come up in and testify for or against an issue. So the community boards know exactly what the vote is and what the community's response is. It's not being done.
Do you think the community boards then are not communicating effectively with the community?
That too. And we had an issue where the community boards...
So how do you think they could do that better? Would that be a question?
I would say involving more people from the community. And if you have, say, people testifying, 40 people for an issue and 10 against an issue, the community board must state that. But they don't do that. What they do is they form their own opinion and they push their own opinion.
So they're not representative of the...
They're not representing the community. There must be an established vote of how many people testified for or against. In our zoning issues, they never declared that. They never said that so many members were against. In my case, a lot of people were against it, the community board did whatever they wanted.
So in effect, you're saying you don't want to see sort of special interests dominate a particular meeting or an issue?
Right. And there must be a documentation of the vote. 40 people are voting for or against something, write it down.
Right, and see the tally.
That must be tallied and brought over. Because the community board will take their position, push their position, and not say how many people were against it. And then you have people from the community board that come from different areas of Queens. And say there's a local issue in Flushing. And I got people from Queens Village, they're on the community board, and they're testifying for or against an issue. That's very insulting for the people that live in that community.
Right.
You know, you've got to give credit to the people in that community. Like when I have a problem, I go around with a petition. And I ask the businesses and the residents, what do they want? And whatever the majority wants, that's what I push and that's what I testify for. But nobody does that.
Okay.
I understand your objections to the way civic associations and some of their officials are behaving, but do you think that's something that's appropriate for the city to regulate? Or do you think that that could then cause competition?
The city must establish they have to state the facts. How many people testified for it, how many against it, because it won't be done.
So you want to see a regulation that puts that on the record?
It has to be a regulation, yes. And you have to force civic associations to take a position. Because we got a lot of civic associations in our area that don't want to take a position. And they don't want to get involved. And that's a problem. If you're a civic association, you're speaking on behalf of the community or your group, you take a position, for or against, or if you don't want to take a position, at least come up and say you don't want to take a position. Not ignore going to the meetings, not ignoring, you know, taking a position on any kind of issue. It's not being represented.
James, thank you so much for sharing that with us. We have four more people that'd like to give an, have given an opportunity to speak. Thank you so much. If the next person could come up, I'd appreciate it.
Hi.
Tell me your name and where you're from.
I'm Lucy Shilleram from this area, Elmeston, Corona. I'm very proud that you're here. I just about made it here, so I'm very glad.
And the question you have...
And my question is, I'm a civic leader on my block. I'm 43rd Avenue in Elmeston. And years ago, we fought for the 110 precinct stay at its present site because they were talking about moving it. Well, we're lucky to hear that it's going to stay, but it needs renovation. And you had a program on scaffolding. Well, the scaffolding's still up for four years in front of the 110 precinct. That's a little too long. It needs renovation. I hear money's coming, but I keep hearing money's coming and nothing's being done. We also have a place for them for parking. Parking's been an issue. We brought that up as an issue. Again, everybody says money's coming and we don't see nothing happening. So we need help with the scaffolding, let's put it that way.
And the question would...
Would it be to get to the mayor or whomever is going to be it, that the 110 needs some renovation and the scaffolding to be moved. It's about four years, that's a lot of money. Costs the city money just to keep that up every, every month. Now, the next thing is our fire alarm boxes. We want to keep our cast iron fire alarm boxes. Lately, they've been removing the top of them, but they're not replacing them or retrofitting them with the latest technology. Yet Jackson Heights and Forest Hills are done already, but nothing in Corona and Elmeston. And we're at a dangerous point. Now, this letter and email was sent to our community board. Now, I didn't want to say I was on it, but I'm on the community board, and to answer this gentleman, our minutes state all the votes, yes and no. So he has to look at that. I've been on the board a long time. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but speaking of as a civic leader that knows how to scream.
Let me bring you back to the issue of the fire alarm boxes. Are you at all concerned that people won't know how to use them?
You made a very good point.
Because they're combining the old technology and the new technology?
Yes, we, unfortunately, are a mixed neighborhood of immigrants, and they're not educated in it. And that's what I'm doing now, I'm on CERT, Community Response Team.
So maybe the question that you'd like to ask...
Is educate, no, no, no. Educate them on how to use it, and one to the schools especially, kids are great at getting to the parents.
Do you think the fire department, the fire engine or ladder in your neighborhood should be going around to schools, churches, and other places to explain?
But if they're moving mine, why aren't they replacing it? That's my fear right now.
So you have a double question. You wanted to know why are they warming it, and you wanted to know how they'll train it?
And we're moving it, we're replacing it. We want to keep the cast iron ones, they're replaced, which is the worst. I don't know. I've just sent an email to our district manager and I want a response.
Do you have any indication whether your neighborhood is scheduled to get the new projects?
No, I'm waiting to hear anything. Again, and we're very late on everything. And I think because of our immigration situation, we're overwhelmed, maybe they're not screening enough, so I'm doing it for them, so I hope to God.
What is the scaffold, what kind of problem does that cause?
Well, to me, they keep putting more up. So I'm saying, well, that says something, so I know our politicians have any funds. The scaffolding should have been down by now.
Has the construction been finished?
Nothing's been done.
Well, you can't take the scaffolding down if they need to do the construction.
But that's only...
But they're not doing the work?
That's it.
So you're saying it hasn't started?
Nothing.
So you want to know what?
Four years down.
The construction hasn't started after four years.
Wow. And if you can fill in the firebox, I appreciate it.
Do you think, do the folks in your neighborhood, when there is a fire, still use those fireboxes? Because I know in some places, they say they're taking them out or they're not bothering to fix them because everyone just uses their cellphone and they don't use them anymore.
Well, you have to remember, those cast irons, not those spin steam ones you see.
The red ones?
They have a beautiful, sage, just...
It's it, okay.
So I think, once they understand that...
You mean because there was no networks, weren't working?
The kids know where it is.
Okay.
Yeah, they play and they watch those firetrials come down. So it's essential, it's a lifesaver. And I know the fire department asks me that. If you can help us with that, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks.
And if the next person could come down, and while they do, we have another Facebook participant, Kenja Kabaj, has two questions. "I'm a single, middle-income woman with no children. You've been working to provide affordable housing, but my income excludes me. Gentrified neighborhoods no longer have affordable apartments, and I don't think that half my salary or more should get me a studio where I also pay for electric heat and hot water. How are you going to help middle-income people from being priced out?" We have a lot of housing questions tonight, and you are, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Julie, I'm from Jackson Heights.
Julie from Jackson Heights, what's your question?
My question is regarding public transportation. I commute from Manhattan every day and have the same commute. I take the train at 74th Street, Roosevelt Avenue, between 37th Road and 73rd Street. I've noticed that there have been a lot of homeless people, a lot of bombings, a lot of slashing, a lot of crime have increased. And I think a lot of the homeless issues stem from areas of bigger issues and how we combat mental health issues here in New York City. So my question is regarding public transportation. Subway service is going down while the fares are going up. Stations are too desolate at night. There needs to be more transit police now that the subway clerks have vanished and we see more of those kiosks set up in service courts.
So you have a very specific question. Your question is, when are we going to get more transit police at night?
Yes, particularly at night. I usually come home around eight o'clock at night. And in that subway area particularly, there's a lot of homeless people that hang out there. And a lot of crime in that area, there's a lot of kiosks to fill your metro car. But there are no subway clerks or MTA transit police officers that monitor that area.
What train do you take?
I take the E.
So it would be that location at the E?
So is this on the elevated area or is this on the inside?
It's on the inside.
Right, okay. Now, do you think other issues like lighting would be more helpful, or?
Actually, lighting there. I find that, you know, people find that area very comfortable to even sleep in. So the lighting isn't an issue, there's just no subway clerk, there's no MTA transit police officers there. There's a lot of aggressors that hang on the turnstile. It's making it uncomfortable for people to even enter a subway station whenever they want to leave the subway station.
So you're afraid you're going to get mugged?
Oh, yeah, especially with the crime increasing in New York City overall. That's my biggest fear.
You know, it's interesting because the mayor and the governor have been having this back and forth about the subway system. Do you have a sense as to who's responsible and who should be responsible?
No.
Okay, well, it's interesting because the MTA is the state agency. So the mayor keeps pointing his finger at the governor, and the governor has his own ideas about what's happened. So I think that all ties together with this dispute, and then you talk about policing.
I feel like there's a lot of finger pointing, like you mentioned, back and forth. But there needs to be some sort of ownership on a localized of that express network.
Well, do you think the mayor should be taking ownership, or the governor, or both?
Both, but the mayor particularly in New York City.
So when you hear the police say crime is down?
I don't believe it. I take the subways every single day. I've seen crime day and night, so, you know, I don't know where they're pulling these stats from. And I think they're over calculating in terms of crime.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So, tell me your name.
Hi, I'm David Swig from Jackson Heights.
David, from Jackson Heights. What's your question?
Okay, so there's a number of quality of life issues that are fighting the city. I mean, these aren't huge issues, but they all add up. Some homeowners are creating illegal driveways. You know, homeowners actually use...
How do they create illegal driveways?
They shave the purple sidewalk in front of their house. Some people have flat driveways, so in front of the door of their house, it's open. There's a curb there, and they just shave it down.
And then so, so nobody can park there or something?
Yes, they make, that one driveway, not that one, it's a sign there saying, "Pocky car in the street," there, otherwise it's a trouble.
Because it's a drive.
Yeah.
So is it, does this happen often, or is it just, you know, once in a while?
In a short radius of where I live, I've seen ten of them. So it's increasing.
Sorry, where'd you say you live?
Jackson Heights.
Which street?
Like, near northern and 70th Street. Just walking around the streets there, I'm seeing them all.
So then people can't park on the street because they think it's a driveway there?
Well, some people don't. Some people go better, and if people are there...
So it's becoming like people sort of saving spaces?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So you have other issues, I can tell?
Yeah, a few more. Yeah, and then the green cabs, sometimes they pick up passengers.
Bonnie, are we good?
Good, you're here?
Ching ching.
Sorry, so your next issue would be?
People who live farther from the subways, they usually pull the little bus driver, and there's green cabs that will operate as dollar cabs in the morning. That's probably not legal, probably not the profi view from there in Manhattan. But the real issue is that they stop at the green lights to try to catch the red light so they can pick people up that's swerving near the curb and then pull them out. You know, it creates very dangerous situations. And, you know, I think they need to be regulated a little bit more, especially if you just walk along the bus drive.
Is that in specific locations or all over?
Well, I mean, I only know about it near me, so...
Is it near a subway stop or a particular bus stop?
It's, it's on the 73rd Street line, the street that goes to Roosevelt Avenue.
When you say they operate as dollar cabs, you mean they'll pack up multiple passengers and charge them each like two bucks or whatever?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, instead of using their meter, like they're supposed to?
Right, correct.
So they're bypassing the fare, in a sense, to just pick up multiple people?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that's not my issue. My issue is it's just that they, they're creating traffic situations.
Yeah, it's hazardous.
They drive dangerously while they're doing it.
And do you see anybody enforcing anything?
No, no, I don't.
No, okay.
Yeah, and there's supposed to be like two police officers walking around in Astoria, Jackson Heights neighborhood. It was a trial program, they were supposed to implement.
Yeah, the neighborhood policing officers?
I've never seen them, I don't know if they ever implemented that, I don't know.
Are they crossing guards anywhere around there? Is there a school nearby now?
I mean, there are schools in the area.
But not exactly over there, because sometimes, yeah, okay. So you're saying it's just like a lot of reckless driving that's hazardous?
Right.
To people crossing?
Right. And then the last quality of life issue is the bike lanes.
Ah, yes.
The bike lanes are a great thing for bicycles, and I feel like they're being placed in the worst possible locations.
Why?
Well, for example, at Queens Boulevard, they put the bike lane on Queens Boulevard. That's, you know, the Boulevard of Death. Why would you put a bike lane there?
Do you not think it's...
I mean, it's, you know...
Do you ever see bicycles in the bike lane on Queens Boulevard?
Not too often, no. No, not too often.
Do you not think it's become safer since they've made those changes? Do you think it's become the same or more dangerous?
As a driver, I'll say it's a little more dangerous because when you go from the express side to the local side, they changed the way you cut over, and there's a stop sign there, and you have to cut over in a 45-degree angle. And as a driver, I'll tell you, that creates a blind spot. So if there is a bike passing by, it's not going to be easy to see them the way they put the stop signs there.
So your specific question about the bike lanes would be what, sir?
Well, why aren't they placed in other streets? Why are they placed in the busiest streets possible?
Where do you think would be a better place to put that one?
Any street that's parallel to Queens Boulevard, right? But not Queens Boulevard itself.
My suspicion is Queens Boulevard is the widest street around, is probably the easiest to accommodate, or is that not the case?
It's a, it's a wide street.
But more traffic?
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic there.
I believe they...
Double parkers.
I believe they said recently that it had been two years since they had a fatality on Queens Boulevard, but you perceive it as being more dangerous because you think, what, do you think there are more smaller collisions that aren't...
Just specifically, I mean, it's more dangerous for the bicyclists, I believe. Because of the way they put the stop signs and the way the cars have to cross over the bike lanes.
So you're also saying that the driver now has to be more careful or look around more? Or has more, you know, is more divergent in what they have to do as well?
So I wonder if it's safe for bicycles, but more dangerous for cars, which might have been the idea, make it more safer for bicyclists?
Well, I think if a bike is passing by and a car is trying to get across that stop sign, they're probably looking more for the cars that are coming and when it's safe for them to go. And you may not see the bicyclists at the angle that they have to cross.
Have you observed any collisions?
Is your question...
No, I haven't observed any collisions.
About a bike lane on Queens Boulevard? Do you have a question you'd like to ask about bike lanes in general?
I do have one. It seems that the people who decide where the bike lanes go probably never drive in Manhattan or Queens. I think that the people who decide where the bike lanes go should comprise of people who ride bikes, people who drive, bus drivers, et cetera.
So your question would be, how do you make your decision as to where you put the bike lanes all over the city?
Exactly.
And who participates in that decision?
Exactly.
You have another, any other?
No, that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We have another person who's going to make his way to the microphone, but while he does, we have another question from one of our Facebook participants, Susan Ashford, who says, or asks, "Nobody should be homeless, so why am I in danger of being evicted? I've asked for help, but get bounced around like a ping pong ball." Okay, and you are?
I'm Mike, I'm a US Navy veteran. I also testified at City Hall yesterday.
Uh huh, what did you testify about?
There was a hearing about the NYPD surveillance technology.
Yes.
So I was one of the last people who testified. Also, before coming here tonight, I tried attending some town hall events. And there's something called viewpoint discrimination, there's a Supreme Court case about it.
And what's your question for whoever's running for mayor?
So essentially, how can citizens get oversight of NYPD officers that violate their civil rights when the mayor's head of security is actually defendant in a federal civil rights lawsuit presently? Who subsequently kept me out of the town hall event on April 27th in Long Island City. Also, there's been some discussion tonight about the issue of homelessness. But I think there hasn't been, there has not been any discussion about the root causes of homelessness and what is being done to try to remedy that. In fact, according to New York State Annual Report, well, New York State Commission on Judicial Conduct, their annual report from 2017, there were 1,944 complaints against judges statewide last year. But when you take a look at how many of those were disciplined, it's few and far between. And there's also, there's no commission that oversees the housing judges in New York State, sorry, in New York City. They've been trying to get that since the eighties, according to that report. But I'm talking to you tonight in 2017. I also had a Queens Housing Court judge come into my apartment in Jackson Heights. While he was there with two court officers, he told me to shut off my audio recorder, despite the fact that it was my apartment, not a courthouse, not a courtroom. And there's a California 2014 federal court case that says, "If a government officer enters your residence, you have the fundamental first amendment right to record any government officer as long as you're not interfering with their duty." So if there's a housing judge who's still on the bench in Queens, who hasn't been disciplined, what can be done about that?
So getting back to your, your questions about the surveillance bill, is the question that you're trying to ask a mayoral candidate, if you are elected mayor, will you sign the bill that would force the NYPD to make public the various details of its surveillance operation? Is that your question?
That's part of it.
What's the rest of it?
Sure, well, during the hearing yesterday, what's his name? Dan Grodnik, the councilman? He talked about, or I should say, the NYPD, they talked about, "The only time they can intercept your phone call is pursuant to a court order." But there was no discussion about how the public can get access to that court order to see if they made a prima facie case to establish a basis to be granted that order. So if there was never any basis for them to be approved that order, shouldn't the public have a right to see, well, they didn't actually...
I think if it's a grand jury investigation, that is protected under the law by secrecy because it is a grand jury. So under that, I don't know that that could be public until there is a criminal case, and that, like a criminal case being tried.
And also with regards to disciplinary proceedings against officers, when you have former tennis professionals shoved to the ground in front of the Grand Hyatt, that was publicized pretty well. But you really don't see what happened to that officer or why a determination was made for that officer to not spend a night in jail on account of that conduct.
So you want to open up disciplinary proceedings?
I would like transparency. I mean, as I stated, I'm a veteran. I took an oath when I enlisted to protect the Constitution. It didn't say except for the NYPD, it didn't say except for judges, and it didn't say until this date. So when I beat a landlord, after three years and five judges at the Queens Supreme Court in a $20 million defamation case that involved five judges, the question is, what exactly were the four judges that preceded that last one doing in not dismissing that case on the merits? And when the supervising judge of the Queens Supreme Court, Jeremy Weinstein, asked a court officer to have me arrested, when I simply pointed out to him he wasn't engaging in his responsibilities by taking inappropriate action in response to false allegations that were in the legal papers?
So you're asking basically for a more public process?
Yeah, and...
Of the various steps, illegal steps?
Right, and just to go back to the original questions I had, I'm going to try to keep this short. One of the things that's really not discussed about is the fact that the wife of Stephen Banks, who's the commissioner of HRA, his wife is actually the supervising judge statewide of the housing courts. So on one hand, his agency is tasked with the responsibility of trying to prevent evictions. But on the other, if his wife is a supervising judge and she's not supervising her subordinates properly such that they can come into somebody's residence, tell them to shut off an audio recorder while that judge and two court officers are conducting a fraudulent inspection, and then don't have that recording to use on appeal, if that judge is still on the bench, if those court officers are still in the courtroom, then what recourse is there for people like me who unlawfully got evicted?
So is your question, is there a conflict between Stephen Banks and his wife being the supervising judge?
And on top of that, when such agencies like HRA have business with companies that stole my pay five years ago, and I'm still waiting to be paid, then, I don't mean to make this a long-winded discussion.
No, it's okay.
But again, this goes to the issue of a root cause of homelessness. If you don't, if you're not being paid what you're owed to pay your landlord what they're asking to be paid for putting a roof over your head, then you have difficulties with your landlord. If you prevail against that same landlord, and then they get angry about that and file multiple failed lawsuits against you, where you manage to get a sworn affidavit from that landlord acknowledging they knew about a defective elevator for over a year and a half, didn't do a darn thing about it, and are now trying to kick out a 66-year-old woman at 6560 Booth Street in Regal Park, you know, $850 apartment? I mean, that's the primary reason I came here tonight. I talked to Andrew Havestain, the most recent town hall, and I asked him if his office in Forest Hills could try to get legal assistance for the 66-year-old woman based on the legal papers I have. And his response to me was that she would have to reach out to the legal aid, or she would have to reach out to his office, not the other way around. However, I don't have her contact information. I just did research to try to find out which other...
To help her.
So I'd like, okay, I'd like to... I hate to interrupt you, but we only have 10 more minutes. And I see that there's, there are other people who want to participate. And I'd like to be able to get this other woman who's been waiting patiently, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for participating. Thank you, ma'am, what's your name?
Oh, my name is Daria Haynes, and I'm a Queens resident all my life.
Oh, my name is Daria Haynes, and I'm a Queens resident all my life, started out in Jamaica.
Get a look closer to the microphone.
Uh, lived in-
You can, yeah, you can push it down. Pull it down to, there you go.
Okay, Queens resident all my life, and currently living in Queens Village. And I, as I was sitting here, I had no questions, but I realized I do. When, it's really a safety concern issue. Driving in Manhattan primarily is when I noticed this. If I would look up in, you know, one street corner to see what the number was, it may or may not be there anymore, the, the green signs, you know, one oh eight street, or, or whatever. And there used to be a, like, a definite, like, every other street, you would know that there was a street number there. And in many instances, there are missing signage, and I thought it was also to save money, because it just doesn't make sense that it's not posted very clearly. And that's also in Queens as well, you know, you go to glance as you're driving, and it's not there. So I just wanted to raise that issue, so that somebody could look into it, because I didn't know who else to call, three-one-one? It wouldn't, it would be a frustrating experience.
Have you used three-one-one in the past, and what is your result?
Oh, it was very, oh, mm, it's a little frustrating, um, because the wait time is-
When you're on the phone, right.
When you're on the phone, and maybe taking public transportation as well, it, it could be-
So you have another question about three-one-one's efficiency?
Oh, I didn't know it did, but I do. I'm letting you know that question, if you could listen to that.
Just curious, if you get results, if you, when you call, how that works?
There was, um, like, a, a problem with the sewer, and it, it did get resolved after several days.
Can you recall any particular streets where the signs are missing?
Throughout Manhattan.
Okay.
You know, along, you know, Madison Avenue, if you're like glancing up really quickly. Sometimes it would be removed when there was scaffolding, or on a corner where they're doing some building. I think, you know, where there's construction, that would happen as well. Or sometimes there's also signage that is now being blocked behind something else. But, so it's just rustic. It used to be, you know, you could spot it, you knew where it was, and it was never an issue. So I'd just like to look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have another question from, um, a Facebook participant, Robert Fernandez. "How does the mayor plan to uphold the ID card law for immigrants?" Now, we do have another few minutes, if anybody else wants a second pass. I see we have an anxious person to participate. Come on up, we have about another five minutes, so. And if anybody else would like a second pass, you know, you can stand in line, and we'll try to accommodate you.
Okay, regarding the, uh, speed cameras, apparently there's a drastic increase in speed cameras. Uh, the community does not support that.
Not yet.
Uh, we, I know, but they're pushing for it. The community sees that as a money-making thing. If you want to find those speeding and increase their amount, that's different. But to add additional speed cameras, it feels like a trap for the community, and we don't see a benefit to that. Um, bioswells, bioswells are trying to push onto the homeowners that created anywhere from five feet to ten feet of their sidewalk in front of their house, that the, the city, um, declares where they're going to go. Uh, and it's creating a problem, because now the homeowner is going to be responsible for that, and we have no say. Now, we have one of the senators on our side in Queens trying to, uh, say that the homeowner needs to have input on it, and if they don't want it in front of their house, they shouldn't have it. And apparently, they're doing whatever they want. They don't care what the homeowner says. They should listen to the homeowner, it's going to be put in front of their property. It will cut away from some of the parking. We don't see alleviating, alleviating much of the water off the sidewalk to, not to, uh, go into the, uh, street. So we don't see that as a, a benefit, but we see it as a problem. Um, and people coming out, you know, getting out of their cars. With that bioswell there, well, they're going to step into it, they're going to trip over it, it's going to be a hazard. Uh, regarding bicycles, we, um, don't like bicycle lanes, uh, in Flushing. There is, you know, what they end up doing is took a two-lane street, and they put a bicycle lane on, and the one car down. Um, so if one car uses the lane, the bicycle's there, we see just double-park cars there taking the bicycle lane. Uh, they put them in, like either the other person said, very awkward places. Uh, and that should not be done, especially in a, a place like Main Street in Flushing, which is very busy. And they did that right by the post office on Sanford Avenue, and that's ridiculous. Then the other things they have is, um, there are the fruit stands. Um, that law to extend fruit stands four feet onto the sidewalk is a problem, and they should not be allowed. Sidewalks should be for people, and not allow fruit stands to extend their businesses onto sidewalks. Now, what's happening in Flushing, um, on Main Street and Roosevelt Avenue is now they're taking away one of the lanes in the street to extend the sidewalk to allow those fruit stands to stay on the sidewalk. That's ridiculous, so, and, uh, to waste-
So you're saying there's no room for people on the sidewalk now?
Right, so they're allowing the fruit stands to stay on the sidewalk, now they have to extend the sidewalk, but they're taking it from the street. Now, the congestion on Main Street with all the, the traffic there, you're taking another lane away to extend the sidewalk. Just stop the businesses using the sidewalk.
Do the cars that, uh, double-park in the bike lanes, do they ever get tickets?
No.
Do you think it would make a difference if they did?
I don't know, we have a lot of people that don't speak English, and a lot of people that don't care, so I don't think it's going to stop, not in my area.
Are there delivery trucks there too, that often take up the bike lanes?
But not mainly, not mainly, mostly cars intentionally doing it.
Well, they took away that municipal lot there, right?
They did, yeah.
So where do people park in Flushing?
Yeah, it's a problem.
Okay. And what do you think, um, if you don't support those speed cameras, what do you think should be done to stop people from speeding?
Well, and you could have the police officers out there with their speed guns, but not speed cameras. I mean, and if you catch them speeding, well, maybe you want to increase the fine, but you can't take that attitude against everybody, that, that's, that's wrong. So, uh, those are our main problems, and, um, I don't want to take up more of your time, but if you have other issues, I can give you my name and address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have time, we have two more questions from our Facebook participants. We have about three more minutes, if one of you, a couple, if you each have a, a short question, we could do, we could take both of you. Let me just read these two questions. One from Vincent LaSella. "Why is Flushing Meadows Corona Park home to more illegal food vendors with no respect for Parks Department of Police Officers and health code, uh, violations?" And the second question from Nikki McCallum. "What's the plan to complete the Build It Back program? Homeowners and rentals in the state, at the state's expense? No permanent bios, no answers, someone is milking the system." Your question, sir?
My question is about policing. It's kind of a follow-up to what this journalist was talking about. In African-American communities, I believe that we are being overpoliced, and I have family and friends that just when they're pulled over by police officers, they fear for their lives. What is it that we can do to bring the police, as well as communities together, so that we do not feel that, number one, we're being overpoliced, and that by getting stopped, it could start to end our lives?
Do you still think that they're getting overpoliced, even with the city's neighborhood policing?
Absolutely, yeah.
So you don't think it's been a success in your neighborhood?
I feel that my, my, and I witnessed it, I feel that my community is being overpoliced, absolutely.
Okay. Do you think they just added thirteen hundred new police? Do you think that was a mistake, if you think it's overpoliced already?
I don't think that, I think community policing in and of itself is what would help. I think just sitting in the car on the corner in my neighborhood with your lights on, that doesn't help.
Do you see the, the, the police department has talked about getting cops out, walking the same beat?
That's not happening.
Do you see that?
No, not in my community, again. I can tell you exactly where I live, they're on the corner, they're in their car with the lights on.
Which precinct?
Um, I'm in Corona, I, I-
So we have about one more minute left, sir, do you have one more quick question? We'd be happy to listen.
With regards to, um, trying to exit the homeless system, especially if you're a veteran, the mayor gave a speech on Veterans Day last year encouraging firms to hire veterans whenever possible, if they're qualified. I've applied at least twelve to fourteen times with New York City government agencies, four jobs that I'm fully qualified for, and have never once been granted an interview, four jobs I've previously held. Also, I was violently assaulted on July second of last year. I got punched in my left temple more than fifteen times. On August sixteenth, I had a job interview with BNP Paribas, uh, French and Elsinore Bank, but I was diagnosed with that concussion on July thirtieth. So, about two weeks after that diagnosis, I'm sitting in a room getting interviewed for a pretty nice position, but I didn't perform well, because fifteen punches to the left temple have really damaging effects. So I guess the question really is this, if there's no oversight of the shelter system,